Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Here.
Mr. Malone? Mr. Marshall? Mrs. McGrattan?
Here.
Mr. Sebelia?
Here.
Mr. Psom?
Here.
And Mr. Washington?
Here.
Seven here, two absent.
At this time, I'll ask if there are any residents or property owners who wish to speak. Eric, were you trying to speak?
Yes.
Okay, you're not, we can't hear you.
Yeah, he's not muted.
Could he use the chat function?
Okay, he's saying, go ahead. If you, if you, yeah, if you figure out your technical difficulties, Eric, I'm happy to allow you to speak at another time. Um, anyone else like to speak at this time? Seeing none, are there any committee, commission, or board reports? I see Mr. Woody. Anyone? Okay. Comments of town councilors? Anyone? Wow, at this rate, we could be out of here in 10 minutes. I would just like to, on behalf of the food pantry, thank the very, our very, very generous community, who donated over 10,000 items during the recent food drive for the food pantry. 10,000 is by about 2,500 more than we've ever collected in the past. So there was a question that we might collect less because of COVID, but instead, as expected, the community came through in a big way, so we thank them very, very much. And to the Leger Congregational Church, who allowed us to continue to spread throughout their church with our, with the donations. But hopefully, we will be processing all of those in the next few days. Or the next few weeks, I should say. Any other councillors have comments? Hearing none, we will move to review and approval of prior minutes. October 28th, public hearing and regular.
Go move, Kevin Dombrowski.
Is there a second, please? Somebody?
Second, councillor Ingalls.
Thank you. Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Um, Mrs. McGrattan? Okay, she looks like she said yes. Mrs. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Let's see, you have your communications list, referrals, I had, I have had none this month. We'll go to subcommittee liaison reports, admin?
The administration committee met at 5:30, and all of our recommendations are on the town council agenda.
Thank you. Any questions for admin? Community relations.
There, there, as, as luck would have it, tomorrow was our, is our planned meeting at 6:30 by WebEx. We're hoping everybody attends. There hasn't been anything since beginning of the month, as you're aware, well aware, our meeting takes place just before the town council meeting. That being said, I'm hoping that everybody comes out. Chief Rich has been kind enough to offer his services to give a good explanation about the traffic safety enforcement and radar usage, how, the spiritual center and how they, they are addressing issues out that way. Not that there's issues at the spiritual center, just that there's been speed enforcement in that area based on excessive speeds, like people have been driving through town, and then just the radar in general on the Shugill Road area, which kind of links into the spiritual center. Because they've used that area, but they no longer use it as an area for parking, so. But Chief Rich will be available tomorrow, he's going to give a presentation. At the end of the presentation, we'll do a question and answer, so that everybody has a chance to talk about, you know, voice their concerns, or get a better understanding of what's going on. Sorry about that. I got stuff beeping in the background. And that's my report.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? We hope to see everybody tomorrow. Hope it's well attended.
Yes.
Finance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town Council Finance Committee held its regular meeting on Wednesday, November 4th at 5:00 PM via video conference, and we took no action on the farm exemptions ordinance, since it's presently affected by PA 490. So we'll be moving on that after, after finance does. The committee continues to discuss adjusting the Leger Housing Authority's pilot payment and the possible option of reducing the pilot while setting aside reduction in the capital accounts for future investment. And since the last time the committee discussed this, the potential grant from Connecticut Housing Finance Authority has increased from one and a half to two and a half million dollars. And the mayor has agreed to check with CHFA to see if they have any objection to the town entering into an agreement to put the 3% reduction into a short-term investment fund for future renovation, or if a straightforward reduction in the pilot would be more preferable by them. So we'll take this up at our next meeting, and everything else is on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Psoms. Any questions from anyone on finance? Hearing none, Land Juice?
Land Juice met last, beginning of the month. We started discussions on reassigning the admin control of the Gales Ferry Community Center. Got a lot of input from town residents on that, so we took no action on that as of yet. We also heard some, received some correspondence regarding some activities, suspicious activities at the park on East Street. So we heard that, we're going to keep an eye on that as well. We also took no action on the tax abatement for the agricultural uses. We're hoping to move forward with that at our next meeting. And other than that, the only other item that we have is on our agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. Any questions for Land Juice? Hearing none, any liaison reports? Yes, Ms. McGrattan?
The Library Commission met last night, and their annual report is on the net. And the Friends of the Library are conducting a silent auction in both libraries, and they have quite a lot, a nice selection of gifts, that's all.
Thank you. Any, any other liaisons, Mr. Washington? Whoops, Mike?
Sorry about that. The Inland Wetland Commission had a field walk on Sat, on Sunday. It was pretty interesting, it was a walk on the Trittown Trail down there along the Preston, from, literally Preston Plains Park, across the street from that, going through the farmland, it's part of going up toward Gear Hill. It was a really, it was a really nice walk, they've done a lot of work on the trail. They're working with the Inland Wetland Commission on getting some permitting issues resolved. What was really amazing is that, and not a surprise, that the, the farmer, Mr. Walt Major, who was used to hay that field and grow corn out there, is interested in going back and re, grab, re-farming that land with hay. And one of the biggest parts is going to be, there's a crossing that takes place across Clark's Brook that has to be addressed. If so, it allows the back portion of the pasture to be re-farmed, if that's the intent. But there is a ton of property back there, and it was, it was a really nice walk through that woodland area. That's my report.
Any questions? Any other liaison reports? The new social, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to mention that Historic District Commission has been meeting in person, and the increase in COVID test positives. They canceled their meeting last night, so they are considering how to meet going forward, and, and one option is to use go-to-meeting, another is to have someone set up a WebEx for them. So I think they're going to need some help with that. And WPCA has a public hearing coming up for a rate increase. The rate increase is being put forward by GRAT Utilities, so WPCA has to raise their rates appropriately. So they have a public hearing coming up, I think it's the 24th of November.
Any other liaison reports? I would just mention that the new Youth and Social Services Committee met earlier this evening. On their agenda was just to discuss bylaws, so they're just getting rolling. And I expect they'll be doing some really good work. Any other liaison reports? Okay, moving on, Mayor? Mayor?
You're missing.
And how, there we go. I think at this point, every single one of us may have done that, so. Back to the executive orders, the governor issued his 79th executive order. What he really did was extend a number of his executive orders through February 9th. But it, what it did not include is things like municipal budgeting and the municipal budget process. I did reach out to Jonathan Harris, who is the governor's senior advisor, and they are working on addressing that for this winter into spring. So they're, they're, they're preparing, so that if we, if we have to go through the same process we went through this past budget year, we're going to be ready to do that again, which is, you know, non, non-personal voting, most likely, WebEx-type meeting for the public hearing and town meeting. So I'll keep you attuned to that as that progresses. The COVID cases are really blossoming in town, we've got 186 cases in town now. We had a plus 20 on November 9th alone, and a plus 12 yesterday. So a lot of cases popping. We've had two more COVID-related deaths, and there are several other people that are hospitalized, that are not in good shape, and we are not certain how they'll make out. We did do another drive-through testing site at the middle school, that was per ledge light. They wanted to do another one, they did an afternoon one and do early evening on a weekday. Not as many people were tested as the, the previous 486, but it, it generated a good bit of traffic. So people are continuing to get tested, and what we really need people to do is continue to wear masks and, and be as safe as they can. The, the drought has been downgraded to a D1, which is a moderate drought at this point. If you drive over the reservoir on Sandy Hollow Road, you can see how much the water level is down, but it is still down significantly. I expect that we may stay at D1 this week, and possibly come out of it in the next week or two, which would be great. If you haven't been up to the town green, on the lower town green, the lot lighting pole bases are now in. The wiring conduits are also in the ground and up to the bases, so they're at the point now where they're ready to put up the poles and the light fixtures themselves. We will have access, so that, for events, we will have access to turn the lot lighting on and off as we need down there. So we'll all get instruction on how to deal with that when we get there. Great news I shared with everybody regarding the steep grant, Leger was awarded the steep grant this year. That was, the, the maximum was $128,205. We came in just under that. It was, it was a little bit limited this year, but it was kind of a surprise that the governor rolled that out. So the steep grant, how we intend to use it this year is we're going to do waterproof LED, or weatherproof LED lighting inside the ag building down below, that's where the farmers market is held. We're going to make some structural repairs to the ag barn, there are a number of posts that are actually just hanging there, so we're going to get those done. The roof is going to be repaired on that, they're going to re-roof the Holdridge Pavilion. They're going to add weatherproof benches on the upper town green that are going to be affixed to the ground. They are going to add wooden parking dividers, I guess, almost like a guardrail. You can see some of those right behind the carriage house at the congregational church now. It's that same style, so it's, it's attractive, it's durable, not like the steel ribbon guardrail. And then the last thing that we're looking to do with this project is what they're calling a little pocket park on the south side. That is at the end of the ag barn, closer to Colonel Leger Highway. There's a grassy area there that when the, the fair removes the remaining equipment there, that area will be grassed over, they will have concrete, round concrete bases poured underneath, weatherproof picnic tables, and a couple grilling stations out there. So I think that will be nice for people, it will also be great for the farmers market, where people can sit down and eat and enjoy the space. So with the grants, I think we've done really well this year so far. We got the 5310 van grant for the senior center. We've got the steep grant, it sounds like we're in a really good spot for the CDBG grant, which is for the senior housing down on King's Corner. And then the last one is the Lotzip Grant, which is the multimodal path going from Leger Center to the high school. So that one is also in process, and Finance spoke about that tonight. Under the elections, Leger had an 86% voter turnout. 8,542 of us voted out of our 99, 45 of registered voters. 62% voted in person, 38% were absentee. So a pretty strong turnout, as we expected. The town clerk's office has gone back to normal hours. We were, as we approached the election, the town clerk's office was inundated with election materials, so they were closing at 2:00 PM to the public, so that the next three hours they could spend just handling election materials. But they've come back. I still have concerns about, you know, how the state is interested, I think, in moving forward. The Dropbox that's out in front of town hall for balloting, the state has asked us not to remove it, and I think it's because that's something that they want to, want to stick with. So in off years, I'm sure it's not going to be a big deal for the town clerk's office or the registrars. They're not going to be horrendously busy. In presidential years, they'll be very busy. So we're going to have to see how that plays out four years from now. But, yeah, we'll see. And then the pension board met today, and I wanted to share this with you too, because I think this is also very good news. We're at 83.7% funded for our pension obligations. The state average is 75%. And we use a very conservative 6.25% rate of return, assumed rate of return. The state average rate of return that's used is 6.76%. And only 23% of towns in the state of Connecticut use a rate between 6 and 1/4 and 6 and 3/4. So as Chris Rollins, our fiduciary advisor, said today, we're probably closer to 95% funded if we actually use a less conservative rate of return. But we're not going to, we're going to stick with what we're doing. So we know that, you know, the $25.4 million that we have in the, in the reserve for pension is, is in place when needed. And then the last thing, well, second to last thing, I'll keep going. Squaw has, is in the process of replacing Water Main right now, leading from their, their wells and to their distribution facility over on East Drive. So it is causing, is going to cause a disruption. As usually occurs, Squaw was digging, and the, the equipment they were expecting to find wasn't where they thought it was. So it's going to change the dates at which they're going to be working on this. And what was supposed to be a one-day project is now going to turn into a multi-day project. But most importantly, as they actually start getting into that Water Main, we will be issuing a boil water advisory. We're going to help Squaw out on that and getting that message out to their, their ratepayers, because it's important. But they will be tapping into that pipe and doing work on it, and so when it opens back up, people do need to flush water, and they also need to boil water. And then the last thing is the food pantry update. And as you're probably aware, we initially started with expansion of the carriage house/burger barn over at the Leger Congregational Church. Expenses seem to be pretty significant in the way of, of build-out there. We also explored the Morgan Barn, which is the red barn on the lower town green. Not a bad space, about 1,200 square feet on the main floor. We did have some issues with it in that the staircase is not wide enough going upstairs to have a lift for excess food. And the, the upstairs is actually made with OSB, the floor is made with OSB, so the load rating for the floor upstairs is very limited. So we determined that probably wasn't a great idea. As you know, we went to, moved to the Gales Ferry Community Center for a look at that. A number of Gales Ferry Village residents expressed their displeasure with that idea. I was a little bit disappointed at the response that we received from several of the members down there. But be that as it may, there's no point in going somewhere with a service where they're not welcomed, and we just, we can't do that. So the fourth option came up, which is the former Leger Center School. There are 10 leases signed over there. I approached the owner with a proposal that I think was very frugal. And ultimately, he, this is non-binding, but ultimately, he's, he accepts. He wants to move ahead with, with our use and what we're doing. He believes in what we're doing, and he is very supportive. So I would like your permission to move ahead with the landlord of the former Leger Center School. And if we can come to an agreement, I think we can have an outstanding space there. Two classrooms there will equal 1,650 square feet. It's all one floor, we'll have heating and cooling, bathrooms are available in that same hallway. We have direct access out the doors for the, both the public and food deliveries. I think, I think the space meets all our needs, it keeps it in the center of town. And the only, the only downside was that I was trying to make the move for the, for the food pantry without expanding our governmental footprint. And that's not going to happen. But I think that given the, the outstanding financial deal that we're going to be able to muster with, with the school and with the, the very kind landlord, I think it's going to work to our favor anyway. And that's all I have for tonight. I don't hear anybody. Linda, I think you're muted now.
So I've done it three times. We've got to get better at reading lips. So what I'm going to do, Mayor, is I will refer that to, I suppose that would be Land Juice?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll try to move that to the vote for the next meeting.
Okay.
And then, Mary has, Mary has a question.
I'll get details together for that.
Thank you. Mary, you have to unmute yourself.
Still on mute, Mary.
I got it, okay. All right. I thought the church had plans to expand, I'm going to call it the carriage house, and the pantry could have moved in there, what happened to that?
So the, the carriage house was actually the first proposal that we started with. And what we came down with, we, we had a, I met with Sean Rusick, the Public Works Buildings and Grounds Director, and he and I came up with a budget of what the town would need to invest to make the space work for the town, and that was about $31,500. But additionally, the church was going to have to be prepared to invest pretty substantially, too. I think it was around $55,000, if I'm not mistaken. And that was, I think it was planned coming from, some from church funding, some from, some from the food pantry funds. So I think in the end, when we looked at it, the possibly $80,000-plus of investment in the building, and it still didn't get us into a single building, it got us still into multiple buildings, and we still had the issue of not having direct bathroom access, which for some of the volunteers, having to march across the parking lot, depending on the season in particular, and the time of day, can be challenging. So at that point, we kind of reconsidered everything and said, okay, if, if we can box it up into one single facility where we have all the space that we need, and we have the bathrooms, and we have the direct access, all under one roof, the feeling was that that was the best scenario.
Any other questions, Mayor, about anything? Anything he mentioned this evening? Okay. Hearing none, we have no old business. Does anybody like, would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Mr. Psoms? Would you like to amend the agenda under new business?
No, sorry, I was adjusting my glasses.
I think you do, I think you do want to.
I'm patient, but yes, I would like to add a motion to the agenda, let me find it, there with me, I forgot all about this. It's only half an hour ago.
You want, you want me to make the motion bill, I have it open?
Oh, I can, I can do it.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to add a motion to approve the funds necessary to implement the written proposal between the town of Leger and Leger Police Union, ASME Council for Local 2693 for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023.
Councillor Ingalls, second.
I would like to recommend, Roxanne, that we move that item right after the consent calendar, since Mr. Steinhoff is here, and I'm sure he'd like to move on to maybe dinner, things like that. So if we do that right after the consent calendar, so at this time, does anybody have any questions about that? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
So the motion to amend the agenda carries. Moving on to the consent calendar, would anybody like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Hearing none, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Wait, we need somebody to move in second.
Oh.
I make a motion to move the consent calendar?
I can, councillor Washington?
Motion's made and seconded, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Psom?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingle?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sibilia?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Now, Mr. Psoms.
And I move, let me get back to my agenda. I move to approve the funds necessary to implement the written proposal between the Town of Ledger and Ledger Police Union, ASME Council 4, Local 2693, for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023.
There are seconds. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, Bill?
No, this was discussed in executive session. We, we normally don't discuss contractual matters. This is just a motion to approve the funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingle?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sibilia?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Okay, so moving on to what was Admin Committee Number Three. Mrs. McGrattan.
Okay. I make a motion to, to recommend the appointment of Laura Kelly, unaffiliated, 972 Shuville Road, to the Historic District Commission as a regular member to complete a term ending December the 4th, 2023, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Sweet.
Counselor Ingle seconds.
Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Sweet for his service and Ms. Kelly for stepping up, both fine members of the commission.
Yes, thank you. Roxanne, would you like to call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingle?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sibilia?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item.
I move that the council adopt a resolution establishing an ad hoc committee to develop a zoning regulation amendment for agricultural uses in the town of Ledger, whereas the Ledger Town Council recognizes the Planning and Zoning Commission's efforts to develop regulations regarding agricultural uses in the town to address unregulated activities that would benefit the town and the agricultural community. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission has requested the Town Council establish an ad hoc committee comprised of members from the town's land use commissions and others to provide recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding agricultural regulations. Now therefore, be it resolved that there is hereby established an ad hoc committee to develop a zoning regulation amendment for agricultural uses in the town of Ledger, and this committee will be composed of seven members appointed by the Ledger Town Council. Those members shall as much as possible be representative as follows. Two members from the Agricultural Commission, one member from the Economic Development Commission, two members from the Planning and Zoning Commission, one member from the community at large, and one member from the Town Council. In addition, request the mayor assign a member from the Land Use Department staff, either the zoning enforcement officer or the director of planning, to support the ad hoc committee. Be it further resolved that committee members shall serve for six, for a six-month term. Any vacancies on said committee shall be filled by the appointment of the Ledger Town Council, with priority given to maintaining as much as possible the structure above, and the attendance of 50% of the appointed members shall constitute a quorum. It further resolve that said ad hoc committee is authorized to review agricultural regulations from area towns, existing ledger regulations, known violations, and existing proposals, review the town's plan of conservation and development relative to the recommendations for agricultural regulations. Review regulation amendments that with, with any outside experts the committee deems relevant to provide a recommended zoning regulation amendment to the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding agriculture. Be it further resolved that said ad hoc committee shall provide a report of their recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission upon completion of their assignment, no later than six months from its organizational meeting.
Any questions?
You need a second?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, I, I would, I initially was, was gonna vote against this, and I've changed my mind because of the six-month period. So I will, I'd be happy to support it for six months. I'm counting on you, Kevin. I don't want to see this back looking for an extension.
I'm, I'm thinking you've already picked a Town Council member.
Sorry, I have. Kevin, you're it. Thank you. And thank you for your willingness to volunteer. Okay, any other discussion?
Also, if, when, if this passes, we'd like to kind of send out a memorandum, either you can do it, or the Admin Committee can do it, asking the particular commissions to submit names to us.
I think Roxanne probably already has it written. So, so we'll, so we'll go ahead and take care of that for you, if you like.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingle?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sibilia?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item. Oh, finance. Yes, finance.
So, Mr. Counselor Psoms, I move to approve the expenditure of $126,629.63 from account number 210204054325, Fire Apparatus C N R, for the purchase of installation and installation of a new motor, Ledger Fire Engine R11, including a bid waiver granted to Bulldog Fire Apparatus in Bosser, Connecticut, to perform the work.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
No move.
So you'll recall that R11 had some difficulties with its engine in the past, and we spent a lot of time looking at, considering what to do with this engine. We decided to have it repaired and then put it up for sale if we thought we could get $200,000 for it. The reason for that is the engine has known problems, and there are many fleet owners who are having trouble with this engine. And we, we felt that if we went after the manufacturer, we'd be at, at the end of a very long line. So we've since put it out for sale. Long story short, it doesn't look like we're gonna get anywhere near $200,000 for it because recently there were some, some disappearing coolant, coolant levels were, were dropping in, in the engine. And they did some checks. They found coolant in the oil. I think they found oil in the coolant. But at any rate, coolant was disappearing. And they found aluminum in the engine oil, which is a very bad sign. That means the engine is not going to last just very long. It seems that the only option we have, and I, I think a lot of work and a lot of thought has gone into this, and I agree with that, the only option we have is to put a new engine in this, in this apparatus. That's the request to approve the expenditure. And we also have with us Director of Emergency Services, Steve Holyfield, who also came to council, along with Deputy Chief Todd Willis from Ledger Fire. So I, I thought I saw John Mann earlier. I don't now. But thank you, gentlemen, for being here and helping us with questions. I'll stop there.
Are there any questions? Mr. Washington?
Just as a point of reference, at $126,000 for the new motor, what's the cost for a new, new fire truck, a new unit?
About $700,000.
Yeah. Okay, yep. No, it just, it just makes sense to replace the motor when everything else is, is, is working good. So people have understanding of the cost.
Any other questions?
Also, this is also a retrofit. Since we looked at this the last time, the manufacturer of the vehicle has done the engineering to recommend a different motor, so we're not replacing it with the motor that had the known problems. So now they've got crossmembers and engine mounts all engineered. That's something we, we didn't want to explore how to do that on our own with, with, with our mechanic. So that, that is good news that they've re-engineered the vehicle.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Ingle?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sibilia?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Hey, Roxanne, it's John. I'm here.
Oh, hi, John. Okay. Do you want to vote on the fire truck?
Absolutely. Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that's eight in favor, zero opposed.
Next item.
Hi, this is Counselor Psoms. I move to create an agricultural lands preservation account as account number 21090305-58923, and to appropriate $1,000 to it from the open space account 21090305-58920 as seed money.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion?
So with our new ag commission and with our hope to do more work in preserving agricultural lands, we can apply for funding specifically for grants, but we need to have this account set up. And we thought the best place to seed it would be to go to the open space account. We've done similar things like this with the open space account. The, the funding for the open space account comes from transfer of real estate. Some goes to open space, some goes to parks and rec. And this was, as I mentioned, will help us apply for grants to preserve additional agricultural land.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sibilia?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingle?
Yes.
And Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Let's see, one more item for finance.
I move that we appropriate $105,000 from account number 21040107-54015, Lantern Hill Bridge, for engineering consulting services for design application permitting and bidding services for the Lotseup Ledger High School, excuse me, multi-use pathway and sidewalk extension project.
Second.
So as you may recall, we applied some time ago for a grant. We didn't get the grant. We reapplied, and we have now been approved for a grant to extend a sidewalk from Ledger High School to Ledger Center. That, that roadway has some dangerous, actually, a lot of it is dangerous to walk on. There are certain parts where there are nothing but guardrails and then drop offs. So we have students walking from the high school to the center of town and back. It's a, it's a good project. It's a grant that is fully funded. Our contribution is the engineering services of $105,000. And as mentioned, we've already been approved finally for this project.
Okay, any questions? It's exciting. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Counsel, Counsel Washington has a question.
Yes, sorry. Mr. Washington?
Mike, you're still muted.
Just, just to, just one's a question and one's a statement. On the, Bill, on the chance that the state doesn't follow through, we'd still be in a situation where shovel-ready, like other towns are probably, you know what I'm saying, in a closer position to be able to drop and go with their plans. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, if we, if we go forward, and by some freak of nature, the state doesn't follow through on their side, it does, it does provide us with a shovel-ready set of plans to move forward in the future.
Correct. The, the mayor and Public Works Director, and I believe the Planning Director, have assessed all of the projects out there. Some are indeed ahead of us. And there are some chances that, that funding could be shifted as other projects take more money. But yes, we could set these plans on the shelf, reapply. And I, I think the mayor could speak to how far up we are on the list. We're not at the top.
And the, the other, the other thing is, just a point of reference, is that for, a lot of people may not know this, but if you play, if you're on the soccer team or use this, fills up there for Sports for Ledger, and you happen to make, say, the Varsity Squad, and you don't have a car, you have to walk up to the field, up, up to Blonders. So this actually gives you a safe method to get to Blonders for practices after high school. If you're in a situation where you don't, you're not driving, but you have to get up there for, for practice.
Great point.
Very good. Any, any other comments, questions?
Linda, if I could, just really quick. So, Mike, to your point, the, there were seven applications for Lotzip. Five were approved. Ledger was one of five. I think we were, in the rubric, we were four out of five in terms of ranking, which wasn't bad, but we were approved nonetheless. New London and Waterford are both slightly ahead of us. They're already into their semifinal design stage. So they have both requested additional funding for their Lotzip grant. But there was about $4 million excess available for the Lotzip projects based on the ones that were approved. So New London tapped into about $600,000 of additional funding to get to their semifinal design. And Waterford was about $250,000. So there's still plenty left. And as long as we keep moving, we're gonna be fine.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sibilia?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingle?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall? Mr. Marshall, hold on, I think you're.
I think he's muted.
Okay. Mr. Marshall? Trying to unmute him. Okay, Mr. Marshall?
Oh, there it is.
There he is. Got it.
Yeah, I was muted.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item. Land juice.
I make a motion to extend archery hunting on town, on certain town-owned lands for one year in accordance with provision in Ordinance 100-018, formerly Number 149, in order providing archery hunting on certain town-owned lands, adopted April 25, 2018, and renumbered on September 25, 2019.
Is there a second, please?
Second by Counselor Sibilia.
Discussion.
So this is just a, works, the ordinance that we have that allowed for archery hunting, bow hunting on town. that allows for R3 hunting, bow hunting on town-owned lands, in specific, the Clark Farm and the Founder's Preserve properties. The ordinance has a sunset clause, and we had to extend it. We just didn't keep going, so we would have to annually keep this to keep it going. Every year, we have to basically re-up this ordinance to approve it going forward. In the cases we've had, it's been very successful and popular with those who have taken part in it. So we recommend to continue it.
Very good. Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Final item. I would entertain a motion to cancel the Town Council regular meeting of November 25 for the Thanksgiving holiday. Is there any motion?
I'll make the motion. Counselor Dombrowski?
Counselor Engel seconds.
And seconds. And then that would mean then our next meeting will be December. Help me out, Roxanne.
Nine, December 9.
And that is our only meeting in December, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Roxanne, any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Sure.
You missed me, Roxanne, and I definitely want to vote yes on this.
I guess I lost your name. So eight in favor, zero opposed.
A motion carries. And before we adjourn, I just wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving holiday. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move.
Motion's made and seconded. This meeting is adjourned without exception. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Take care, everybody.
Night, everyone.